I'm gonna ask you all, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. I assume everyone in this room knows that Jenna was called away for a family emergency, and I think she's exactly where she needs to be right now, so we're gonna just leave that where it is, and I'm sure she'll be in touch. The agenda items to start with, we have the minutes from the January 23rd, 2003, regular board meeting, and has everyone had a chance to read through those? I hope I see nothing. I hear crickets. Board looks at them like crickets. I assume that we have. If there are any questions, any board members have any questions? Okay. Any questions from the, you know, gallery? The usual suspects are all here. Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 23rd meeting, board meeting, as presented.
So moved.
Thank you.
And a second.
Thank you, Jenna. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Moving on, we have the minutes of the February 7th study session at the middle school, correct? I was the only one who couldn't be there, but somebody had to be on that cruise ship. That's all I can say. Okay. So, yeah. Okay. Anyway, I was able to read through that. It looks like, but from what I heard from others, it was a really good walkthrough and good information from the middle school, and it was fun for them to participate. So, any questions or concerns for board members on the February 7th board meeting, study session, excuse me? Anything from anybody else? I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of the February 7th study session.
So moved.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, Jenny.
Was that you, Ethan?
I said.
Or did you say something? I couldn't hear you. Okay. Are we good?
Good.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we have the financial report. Todd, always one of the highlights of our evening. Can you, if you would like to walk us through the funds report?
Okay, education fund, we have receipts in January, $1,039,026.71. Expenses of $825,036.31. Cash balance in the education fund at the end of January, $1,073,818.51. Debt service fund, we have receipts of $14,653.74. There were no expenses in January. Cash balance at the end of January is $871,322.43. The operations fund, we have receipts of $11,886.52. Expenses of $271,901.88. Cash balance at the end of January in the operations fund, $866,857.35.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns regarding the funds report? I would accept a motion to approve the funds report as read. So moved. Thank you, Jenny. Stand a second.
One second.
Thank you, Ethan. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to claims. Okay, the grand total for it. Are you gonna?
I can't.
You usually do. I thought you did. I don't know. Go ahead.
We're asking for approval of claims in January for part of this month to be approved in the total of $1,335,863.71.
Okay. Any questions regarding claims?
I've just got one, and then hopefully it's an easy one. Just scrolling through to get myself more familiarized with the layout and formatting and all this. Can someone explain, because I get confused looking at it, what the 800 school lunch fund is? Because I see stuff, everything from an AT&amp;T bill to...
Gordon's piano.
Gordon's piano services to... Okay. I wondered with a couple of them, but...
Supposed to be Gordon's food service, maybe?
Right.
Yeah.
Just wondering what, because, you know, and I assume if I see like an individual's name and it's like 50 bucks that we pay for their lunch at some point or something, but I just don't know.
Well, that could be mileage reimbursement.
Okay.
The, obviously, the department heads, the directors all have cell phones
Right, okay.
for communication with GI or whoever. But every expense out of food service has to come out of that because the majority of our money comes from the state's Department of Agriculture.
Right.
And they're very particular pickings on how things work.
Okay.
So that helps transparency when it comes to audit.
Got it.
Which we were being reminded of at that moment.
Daily. Multiple times a day.
So wouldn't that mean anything like, just at the bottom of page three, the ISBO classes thing was someone from that department?
When, there's a, sort of, they have, ISBO is the, Indiana Associated School Business Officials, and they have different certification tracks, and when it's in the middle of, I couldn't tell you which track, she's in the middle of her certification process.
Well, that makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think we can do that.
Yeah, that's one of my favorite things. I'm like, oh, that's...
Those are always, it should be allowed too, and I asked a lot of questions in the beginning about that too. All right.
So when you have an undesirable event like that, you charge the wrong fund, do you place it, do you note it somewhere in the same?
You just go back and correct the name, right?
Yes, you can correct it in the fund, correct?
What's that? Like, I, once it posts, I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, once, once you post it in that, in your next statement, it'll show where it was recredited to that account, just way of your balance.
Well, like, like in the case of the Gordons, it was just, we just put the wrong sender.
Just a typo.
It was the board, but it was.
It's still in the big number. But it doesn't affect the big number for the food.
Right. But would we have paperwork somewhere that says, just in case someone looks at the...
Correct, absolutely.
Yeah, that's a typo. God, we had to, hey, you know...
It was my error. I did the wrong...
And it was entered wrong, and some of that are, we're working on, well, our financial software, we like our financial software a lot, but it's still DOS-based, and we're working on, we're the process, they have an uncreated version, it's cloud-based, and we're starting that process hopefully sometime in the next few weeks.
And then we'll clarify when you say.
Okay. It'll be easier, like, right now, if we make a purchase order and we have the wrong vendor, wrong amount.
They won't do that.
Yeah, we have to cancel it and start over, and so, not to get...
Want to modify it to an extent, but not...
Will it have a better font?
Nah, that I...
Well, we visually saw it.
Better font, in color.
This looks like it's been typed out.
I was gonna say, it looks like, it looks like someone scanned it in, which for all I know, they did.
We did. I do. I scan them in.
Is it scanned in? Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I just figured, it kinda looked like that. I was just wondering if there's anything we can do about that.
That's all I was wondering.
That's good. Good answer. All right. Did you get your questions answered, Ethan?
I feel great about it now.
Okay, good. All right, and any other questions about, then let's move on to payroll. You want me to read the number, or you can do it, Todd? Doesn't matter to me.
I can do it. Asking for approval of payrolls from January 27th and February 10th, 2023, in the total amount of $968,404.65.
Questions or comments from the board? Any concerns from the gallery? If I would accept a motion, then, that we go ahead and approve the claims and payroll as read? So moved. Thank you, Jenny. Stand a second.
Second.
Thank you, Stephen. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to, oh, Casey, I forgot to, oh, she's lying. I didn't mind. She's, okay. And those are, those two. Moving on. The next item of business, one, just run them on the right, oh, it's on back here. The next, the next item is our donations, and I have those here. And I print them out at home so I can actually read them. How about that? We have, again, this month received several donations from the area, and this month donated, in February 2023, for Columbia Elementary, five kids' backpacks with miscellaneous items from the Fulton County Sheriff's Department. Thank you Skeeter and Mitch and Company. Columbia Elementary School received $588 library funds to buy books from Jennifer Kinney Overmeyer. Columbia Elementary received 56 dental kits from Dr. Michael Lizinski, DES. Riddle Elementary received $588 in library funds to buy books from the Jennifer Kinney Overmeyer. Riddle Elementary also received $100 for One Book, One School from Arnie and Laura Snipes. RHS received a $400 prom donation from Tom Wilson Memorial. RHS received a $500 prom donation from Rochester Telephone Company. RHS received $300 for elementary students who attended Wizard of Oz from the Tom Wilson Memorial. RHS received $46.54 for RHS Cheer as a free will donation. Rochester Community School Corporation received $2,629.28 from Kids Bridge Food Pantry from Grace United Methodist Church. Rochester Community School Corporation received $163.73 from Rochester Community Schools from the Kroger card participants. So, again, I didn't tally them up, but there's easily, you know, $5,000 on this page, and we're very grateful for the funds that the community and the different foundations and members of our own zebra herd donate to support the things our staff and students are accomplishing and trying to accomplish every day. So, are there any questions about the donations? Okay. If not, I would approve a motion to accept the donations.
So moved.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Thank you, Jenny. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oh, Casey, hey. You gonna? Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. I didn't see you pop in. Moving on. This is the final, final reading and adoption of the policies and, of the following policies and bylaws. Policy 1521. Policy 3121. Policy 4121. Policy 2431. Policy 2432. Policy 2464. Policy 310, or excuse me, 3120.02. Policy 3120.11. Policy 5420. Policy 5610. Policy 6250. Policy 6550. Policy 8120. Policy 8121. Policy 8210. Policy 8220. Policy 8400. 58, and 5810, and finally, policy 8600. And this is the third reading. We've all had a chance to look over these, and there were, were these the ones that we worked on the last time, Jenny?
Yeah, we met in November and discussed these, and they were all pretty straightforward. But I have more information if anyone has any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding these policies that we will be voting on?
Do we need to clarify on some of these policies where it says, highlighted in green, vote for, select one of the following options?
We actually, those decisions were made at the, at the policy committee meeting, and then those are already, Janet has the notes for those and which ones, and when she uploads them to the updated policy, she will make those check marks online.
Right, but what I was referring to was that we need to, when we vote on each policy, say that we're gonna be approving the selected policy?
Typically, we...
Because there's multiple.
There are multiple, but what we do, Stephen, is as a team, since we've been through them and the decisions through the policy committee were discussed at length, there was a lot of discussion in terms of, and the four people on that committee at the time were Jenny, Casey, Jenna, and me, and, and then we presented that probably at the December meeting before you, you folks were sworn in, so that those options were made available, and you've had a chance to look at them, and you know what the options are. And then we just say, as, as a, we, we vote on them as a, as a unit. We don't vote on each individual policy.
Do you have specific, like, is there specific ones?
No, there's nothing specific. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear as to what all...
And once, once it's uploaded to the state, then we update our policies in board docs, so they're available for anybody who wants to take a look at them, and they're available to the public as well.
Does that turnaround usually pretty quick?
No, nothing is quick. I mean, it might, it's gonna be...
Relative to how long stuff from the state usually takes.
It actually, these, these are often policies that we must make because of state law. However, we don't have to upload them specifically to a state agency. We have a contractor, and our contractor is Niola. And so we upload that, that to them, and then they put that on here for us. And that turnaround is a week or two usually. They, that has, as they've modernized their process, that has gone quicker. It used to be all paper, and so since it's electronically done. It looks like most of these didn't have any new options, because some of these are updated options, and so we already had, like, some of these are just updated policies, not new policies. Most of them actually are, and so the options were already selected for those. There's a grievance procedure in there, and we were recommended to take option two, but I think as I look through most, most didn't have any extra options, but if you had any specific questions, we can look into those.
That was just a question out of my curiosity, just not knowing how quick that usually comes back once we vote on it.
And then they'll be in our... You, most of what the, we have on board docs, the, all of the public can access. There is an executive way to access, and the only time we use that, other boards can use it for disseminating information in different ways, but we don't do that. We are very transparent. What, the only time that there's anything extra on board docs for us that's not yet for the public would be those policies that haven't been approved yet, that would have the markings on them. So if you go to, if you're logged in, I'm not logged in. But if you go to policies, there should be a drop-down menu, and there's something that will give you an option. We can go over that another time, but for the best of it, you can see those. And Stephen, you're on the policy committee now, so you'll do that too.
Everybody good? Any other questions regarding these policies? If not, I will accept a motion that we approve the policies at the third reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark.
Me.
Guys, who's called?
Oh, hi. I saw a hand go up over there. Sorry. All righty then. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Casey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. Second item is approval of a field trip for JAG State Career Development Conference in Indianapolis. And it's a nice five-page document that we got from JAG, not JAG, I'm sorry, from Hannah Tierney. Is that correct?
Yep, she's very JAG.
What does JAG stand for?
Jobs for America's Graduates.
Okay. Is this, is this through what used to be called HOMAC? I'm just gonna say that because I don't know.
No, JAG's its own entity. The kids will get a ton of scholarship money from the program. They just went to a local regional competition and did really well, and we had a couple of people who won their division. And so the reason this is here is because it's overnight in Indianapolis for the Continued Development Conference, so.
I think that's wonderful, and I think it's, I mean, obviously, from what was in here, I'm, you know...
Yeah, the group created a commercial, and they won that, and then we won, I think it was one of the speech contests, one of the young men, men won, so, actually, our club president won it, so it's a good, gonna be a cool experience for those kids.
It'll, it'll be good for everybody. Good. Now is the whole team going, or just, just the...
Well, I think there's a selected group of them that are going. I don't remember which ones off the top of my head.
Okay.
Three?
Three students, three shot brooms.
Very good. Well, it sounds like they'll be well-covered. All right. Any questions or comments regarding the JAG field trip to Indianapolis? If not, I will accept a recommendation or a motion that we approve the field trip as presented.
So moved.
Ethan, thank you.
One second.
Jenny, thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Casey?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Next, we have the personnel report. Recommendations from Columbia Elementary, Amanda Oozley, long-term sub for Melissa Belpedio. Sorry. I've heard it multiple times. I should be able to say it. Belpedio. With payback dated to January 16th, 2023, at a daily rate of $140. Elena Swanson, daycare assistant, hourly rate $12.51. Columbia Elementary Spring Intercession, Beth Meckling, first grade, at her hourly rate. Michelle Jaeger, kindergarten teacher, hourly rate. Hannah Clemmons, IA, at her hourly rate. For Riddle Elementary Spring Intercession, Alyssa Ramsey, teacher, at her hourly rate. Nikki Overmeyer, teacher, hourly rate. Amy Freeman, teacher, hourly rate. Heather Schaefer, instructional assistant, at her hourly rate. For Rochester Middle School, Jane Ricketts, long-term sub for Mrs.? Duran Lo's maternity leave, with the anticipated dates of February 20th, 2023, through April 28th, 2023, eight weeks, daily rate of $140. RMS Spring Intercession, John Walkman, teacher. Myra Dunfree, teacher. And Emily Brown, instructional assistant, all at their hourly rate. RHS, David Wallace, CTE position, annual salary of $40,000. Maintenance Department, Tabitha Bowen, building technician at Rochester Middle School, hourly rate $1,250. Athletic Recommendations, RMS Track, head coach Nate Basham, stipend of $1,143. Assistant Coach Isaac Schaefer, stipend of $950. Assistant Coach Brian McCants, stipend $950. Assistant Coach Eric Davis, stipend $950. Volunteer Assistant Coach Harrison Corkos, and no stipend. Athletic Terminations, Adam Packer, eighth-grade girls' basketball coach, on February 14th, 2023. Resignation, Vanessa Cross, Columbia Elementary, resigned February 13th, 2023. Mariah Yocup, Columbia, Columbia Elementary, Title I position, effective February 23, 2023. Ryan Seager, Rochester High School, CTE teacher, effective January 31st, 2023. Jennifer Gebhardt, food services, Riddle Elementary, effective February 21st, 2023. Brittany Kaufman, food service, Rochester High School, due to health reasons, effective February 27th, 2023. FMLA, Melissa Belpedio, from January 9th through approximately, or till July 10th of 2023. Christian Grostefon, extended until release from surgery approximately February 28th, 2023. Kelly Howard, 1/23/23, approximately, 4/23/23 is her return date. Jennifer Moore, January 16th, 2023, through approximately March 28th, 2023. Terror Smoker, intermittent, 1/30/23 through 12/31/23. Deanna Vandembosh, 2/10/23, approximately, 2/24/23. Any questions or concerns about the personnel report?
Don't like all our resignations, but...
Um, yeah, we have that from time to time. And summers, it seems like the board may not have a lot to do in the summer, and summer is an extremely busy time as we, as people move around from... It, it, yeah, it's kind of like the silly season in education, and everybody swamps. So, if there are any questions regarding the personnel report? If not, I will accept a motion that we approve the personnel report as read.
So moved.
Thank you, Jenny.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Casey?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Uh, next we come up to item G, the superintendent's business, and I'm gonna ask that the principals go ahead and share your information with us. We'll start with, we'll start with the little people. Let's start with Oscar.
Good. So I learned quickly last year, my first year at the high school, when you get to spring break at the middle school, you start to wind up the year. It feels like we ramp up the year when we get to the height at the high school level. Uh, so here recently, we had FFA week. We did our first tractor parade. They drove from the parking lot through the front of the school. Skeeter did a great job emceeing the event. Um, we had one young lady who brought her through in road gear that we gotta slow her down next time. But besides that, everybody was safe, so it worked out. Um, they had Kiss the Pig, cornhole tournament, Milk Chug, which is a trophy for that's really cool. Hopefully, they put that on social media. Uh, they took a ski trip, and then they also recently had their FFA banquet. So Mr. Pearson's had a lot going on down there in that wing of the building, and we did a good job as a staff supporting the cast and FFA with their hog roast.
Oh, how many people did you have to send down for meals?
I think we probably brought 50 to 60 meals back, so that's the annual habit. I got asked to go to Valparaiso by the boss at 5:30 that morning, so I didn't get one, but that's where we are. Uh, we also had the Kewanas Club in to the high school, and Mrs. Masterson, the culinary arts, provided lunch. The lunch was really good, chicken tacos, and then the students did a phenomenal job bragging about, not just Mrs. Masterson's pathway, but all 16 pathways that we offer in the high school. Uh, we had freshman orientation. Surprisingly, we had a really good turnout for that. We had about 42% of the class show up for that, which doesn't seem like a lot, but that's a big number for us, especially... Um, especially since the eighth grade's already in the building. Sometimes parents think they already know it. But we appreciated them being there and gathering that information. Uh, wrestling and swimming finished up their season successfully. We have boys' basketball sectional this week. We are hosting. So, uh, the engineering classes, Mr. Lous classes, took their bridges to the bridge bus at Purdue University last week. Um, the fire department came in and did CPR classes and gave every eighth grader, I can't remember, I think it's Annie, they called it. An Annie doll that they took home and they promoted Take This Home and Teach Three People in Your Home CPR to try and get that out there. Uh, Chief Butler and the EMTs did a tremendous job with the students that day in Mr. Davis's class. Enrique Navarro won the bowling state championship. Bowling's not IHSA-sponsored, but it is a great representation of Rochester as a club. So congratulations, Enrique. Uh, we had a sweetheart dance, which we learned is probably a little too close to prom to do it around Valentine. So next year we're looking to move that to the November, December months. But the kids, we had a pretty good turnout for it. They did a really nice job with that. Uh, we've been going to Woodlawn with our principals of healthcare. Uh, I think the thing that I'm most proud of since the last board meeting is our fine arts pathway got approved by the state. I cannot take much credit for that. Tara Schaefer and our guidance department, along with Mrs. Duranlo, Mrs. Schaefer. I'm gonna leave people out, Ms. Allen. Who else? Hope? Uh, they all did all the hard work. I just had to sit in a Zoom meeting to make sure that I could explain it to, um, the DOE well. And we got that approved, which is huge for our students, including this year's graduates who would have been on a waiver. Some of them will get that pathway instead, which is huge for us as a building as well. Uh, coming up, Wednesday's a big day for us, SAT School Day, legislators and infinite wisdom. We gotta give everybody the SAT, and we have to use almost every breathing adult body we have as bathroom monitors, hall monitors, and test givers. So we're doing that, but that means everybody eighth through 12th, except for the juniors or e-learning that day. Uh, we appreciate your support in that. And that allows us to have enough bodies to administer the SAT. Um, we're getting ready to redo the pool area, which is great because we're getting ready to also have our engineering classes take their boats for float in the water, which usually leaves nails and screws on the bottom that we didn't have to send our swimmers down to get. So we have that going on March 9th. We have band concert March 8th. And then the annual consignment auction that the FFA puts on is the 25th of March. So we have a lot coming up, and we hadn't even started about getting to graduation yet. Um, musical. It's not this next month, but it's crazy how hard the kids are practicing, how well they're doing in the musical. It's Wizard of Oz. There's 20 to 30 elementary kids that Jill Weaver needs props for because we have about 15 students that are in that age that come to the high school every day off the bus and usually run through the halls like they're getting ready to go to war. But now that Mrs. Weaver's in charge, even if she's not at the door, they walk in, they sit down, and they're all single file until Mrs. Weaver shows up. I would, I need her to come home with me. So, um, and then we also have NJHS or NHS, it used to be NJHS at the middle school, NHS inductions, March 29th. So we got a lot academically, a lot athletically, and then we host sectional this week. Mother Nature looks like she might be a bear on Friday for us. We'll find out. Questions?
For the SAT day, Oscar, is that synchronous or asynchronous? Do they have to log on at specific times?
No, they do not. Since over half the district's in session, that allows us to play that gray area game to be able to do that. So we've actually kind of been the model for about four other schools who've contacted us in the last week how we're gonna do it. That's where we're at.
And that's juniors only for the SAT?
Yep, they come in. As long as we don't have a two-hour delay because of fog, and it's gonna be 60 degrees on Wednesday, we'll feed them breakfast and we'll have about 35, 40 minutes. But after we get everybody in to get comfortable, and then we'll start the testing, we'll get down to about 1:45.
Kids are super excited.
Yes, they are.
I know, Oscar, I know, but it's not maybe how we would have all wanted to have a mandate come down like that. But I have had parents that are thankful that we do that because then they don't have to try and arrange a Saturday and work on that and pay for it and so on, so.
Yeah, it's huge, but we also have students that they have no desire and it's tough for them, so both spectrums.
Thank you, Oscar.
Uh huh.
What you got for us? Cassie?
Um, we also had a Valentine's dance. Our dances look a little different than past. Like go parties and running around and doing the training and all kinds of things like that, but it's always fun. Um, eighth-grade boys did win the basketball RRC. I think that was two weekends ago, maybe, so congrats to them. Um, our RMS wrestlers won the triturni this past weekend. It was fun to send some classes and students out to look at the tractors. We had some people more than happy to let the kids get a close look and some history behind what they brought in that morning. Um, I did get to experience Valpo with Oscar the other day. We went on the schools to watch site visit. Those are, just like we had people come and see us and evaluate us and decide if we were gonna be re-designated. They also use those schools that are designated to go to those other places. So it is very interesting and we learned a lot, a lot of cool things, and it's always nice to learn from fellow educators. Um, coming up, we are hosting a big wrestling tournament Saturday, hopefully if Mother Nature lets us. And we have 10-plus teams coming to that. We have our PBIS day coming up next week on Friday, as well as our talent show. We did just send out our elective selection sheets to our current fifth and sixth graders to help us make their schedule for next year because we want to give them whatever classes they're most interested in, if at all possible. Working on spring intercession and that I-Learn schedule. That's what we have going on.
Can you now take me through?
I-Learn?
April 1st, I-Learn?
I-Learn is gonna be, for us, we're gonna do it the end of April. We're gonna get it done in one week.
Okay.
Any questions?
Every now and then I think I miss it, and then I look at people like, mm.
Riddle?
You ready?
Yes, absolutely. Um, next week, our third graders will be, our second and third graders will be taking I-Read. So our second grade opts into the, the I-Read, and I think we had over 40% of our second graders pass last year, right around 40%. Um, so we'll continue doing that this year. We'll be going Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Can I ask about that?
Yes.
Did they, um, if they passed last year as second graders, do they still have to take it?
Nope, so they are good to go. Once they pass it.
I mean, seriously, I mean, they can't like try to get a better score or they're just?
Just pass, pass. Let's not get, let's just celebrate the, celebrate the win.
It's good.
Um, yep, and we've got our, our intercession coming up as well, working with Mr. Snyder on the enrichment. We've got bowling going on. Um, we've got the, uh, One School One Book coming up after spring break, and there are spaghetti dinner tickets out there available, I think, through the end of next week. Um, so, um, there's a spaghetti dinner on April 11th, I believe, to help support One School One Book. So if you're around, family or friends, purchase a ticket. You can get it at any school, or you can contact Riddle. We've got them there. Um, shout out to our math adoption committee, and thank you, Ethan, for helping with that. And we had a couple of parents in as well. Um, I think that's about it. We had our jump rope for heart. Mrs. Walkman kicked that off today. So for the next two weeks, um, our kids will be fundraising for that, to help with that. We've got, um, I want to give a shout out to some fourth-grade kids that came up with their own business called Us and Stuff. And they helped raise money for Riley's Children's Hospital. We've been participating in a penny war. And, uh, they came up with their own business in fourth grade, came to me and presented it. And they've been selling things in the gymnasium in the morning, and that class has probably raised close to $800. Yeah, it's, you know, when they present it to you, you're like, I don't know how that's gonna work, and then they, they do it. And so it was pretty amazing. So a shout out to them, and I think that's what we've got going on.
What, why do they sell them?
They've got, they, they talked to their parents and some stuff from their, their house, a lot of fidget-type things, monkey noodles. I don't know, it's elementary life, so you may not know some of these things. And then candy, sticks of gums for 50 cents a pop with a hot commodity. I know. Uh, bookmarks, homemade bookmarks and art pieces, all types of little trinkets. So they, it made quite a lot of money.
You know, where there's a will, there's a way.
Yes.
Jason, what you got for us?
Alright, uh, today we had a, uh, all-school program. It's called the Dead Program. And basically it was just a kind of a skit. Y'all got up and just did, did a little bit of a skit. It was kind of a positive mental type thing, teaching kids to never quit, um, you know, to, to be good to others, just a, a positive type thing. We try to have those kinds of complications and stuff here whenever we can. Brenda, our counselor, set that program up, and I just let her run with it. She did a fantastic job. Uh, last week, we took, um, our star card winners to Nubianos, and they learned how to make pizzas. And, uh, so we took 10 kids over there. Um, we have one preschool kid, and the rest were first, kindergarten and first graders. And they had a fantastic job. They're very, um, they're, they're good hosts over there. They take time to talk to the kids about pizza dough and how to properly make it and how it cooks. And they just have a blast. So, uh, we really, really enjoyed that. Our upcoming one, we, our next zebra zone will draw out 10 more people. Um, and we may actually do 15 this time because I think we can accommodate it. But we're gonna take the kids to the, um, Elemental Arts Studio and let them go up there. So it is our theme of trying to develop relationships with people in the community, businesses in the community, entities in the community. Um, we continue to move around and, and go visit those places. Um, one of the things that we just got completed, uh, on, on Sunday, Junior Achievement, as you all know, we spend, they spend a lot of time in our buildings. Um, they do a lot of programs all the way down from the elementary in Columbia all the way up through the high school. And, um, a lot of really cool things for those kids. That's a very expensive process. Luke and I both sit on the Junior Achievement Board, and so we know how much fundraising and stuff has to take place. And, um, Columbia every year puts a team in for the bowling. And, um, the, the bowling thing is, is that you pay to bowl, you go and bowl, and you can win prizes and things. But the expectation is, is that your team donates or brings donations or something, um, to Junior Achievement so that they can earn some money, um, to keep, keep them in the, uh, keep, keep them in our building. So, uh, we ended up doing an auction. We do it every year, and this year was our biggest, um, amount of money raised from the staff. It's a staff auction. It's not a student auction or anything. And, uh, we raised almost $600 for Junior Achievement, so, um, that was really good. We always talk about the donations that we give. Um, I think we also do a pretty good job of also giving to the community as well, aside from our day-to-day operations, but, um, by, by donating and doing things like that. Uh, we've been doing early enrollment for pre-K and kindergarten. Uh, we've got that whole process going right now. Um, we've got our roundup, which will be held over here, scheduled for April. Uh, in May, I'm working on a kindergarten, incoming kindergarten parent day where they can come to the, to the school, um, during the school day, and we'll give them tours. Um, let them see what a classroom looks like when the kids are actually there, see the playgrounds, cafeteria, bring their kid in, spend a couple hours in the building, let the kids get on a bus for the first time, just some of that stuff that, um, if they can kind of get it before, um, we think that the parents will really enjoy it. And, uh, then it's not that first day of school in August, and they're wanting to come in and spend half the day in the building and stuff like that. So we think it'll be a real, real good program for the parents and the students as well. Uh, intercession's upcoming. We've mentioned that. We've got a bowling enrichment scheduled. Uh, we doubled the size of our bowling enrichment because of the turnout, the amount of responses we got from students. Um, basically, within 24 hours of sending those things out, we had already completely locked in every spot on the bowling alley. So, um, we worked with the bowling alley, got a second time set up so that we could accommodate more kids and get more in there. So, um, that's a, that's a real popular one in the spring. Parents just drop their kids off, kids have a blast bowling. They do a great job out there and got the music going and Luke dances. It's really fun. We're doing a book fair this week. Uh, Friday is an open time for parents. Uh, we do it from 3 to 7, and, um, if anybody, any parents or anything want to go. If not, all the kids go through the book fair, um, during their library time throughout the week. And we do not need anything at this time, so.
Maybe, maybe I'll have Luke's fourth grader run your J8 next.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Was a great, I'm just really impressed with those little guys. It was quite the project. It was really, what, what is it called? Us and Stuff?
That's their business name. Us and Stuff.
Us and Stuff. I like it. I should have them complete out my business. Anyway, um, the, uh, you know, this is the superintendent's, uh, comment, but, uh, I would just ask that all of you, keep Janet and her family in your, in your thoughts and prayers as, uh, they're going through a rough time right now. And, um, it's gonna get worse before it gets better. And, uh, we, uh, we lost a, a dear member of our zebra herd. And I want to commend all of you, the, uh, from somebody who was out of the country at the time. I actually heard all kinds of wonderful things about how impressive our district is, how, how kind it was for the school to make that available, et cetera, and was one of our own. So, uh, lots of people could use our warm wishes and, and prayers and support, uh, going forward. So I don't mean to be Debbie Downer, but I just appreciate what all you did. I, I was actually pretty heartsick to not be here. It was kind of like one of those, you ever been in one of those situations where you need to be two places at one time? And, uh, it's just not possible. Um, that's where I was. So, uh, I just am real proud of all of you and, and the way things were handled with the loss of our dear friend Stacy. So, um, thank you all for all that you've done there. And, uh, with that, um, it sounds like things are going great guns and busy, busy, busy at all the buildings. And, uh, thank you for everything you do for our kids. I'm very invested in, in, right now I've got five kids in four buildings. Next year, I'll be down to five kids in three buildings, I think, but, um, we're, no more waving at Jason every morning for the days that I get to drop off and pick up. Uh, just we appreciate all you do and how hard you all work. And we, as a board, um, don't often get the opportunity to say that, but, uh, it's obvious and every day from all the things we hear from our, our kids and from the community. So thank you for what you do. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Can I just?
Absolutely.
I do, I won't take up, I know everybody's ready to go, but I did go to the School Board Association State House Day last week. Um, so they do a great job during sessions, sending out emails frequently. I won't reiterate all that's in there because, um, you all have the opportunity to read those. But, um, Terri Spardwin is an excellent executive director. He came a couple of years after I started on the board, so I experienced it under a different director. And he's really taken this advocacy for public education, um, to the next level and has excellent relationships with, um, many of the legislators. And we had two different panels that we had, that we had caucus leaders, two Republicans, two Democrats, one each from the House and the Senate. And then we also had, um, ranking members of the Education Committee, both Republican and Democrat from both the House and the Senate. And it was a very respectful time, you know, it's, there's some pretty emotional, um, feelings right now and, uh, some pretty tense legislation. But it was, it was really affirming as well because, um, seeing them work together was very helpful and seeing the respect that, that was in the room for both the attendees and the legislators was very impressive. I was disappointed that our Senator and Representative did not come. They were both on the Education Committee, so that would be very important. I've extended an invitation for them to come multiple times. I encourage you all to email them as well, so that they are welcome to come into our buildings, talk with us. Um, since they've been placed on the Education Committee, unfortunately, I don't get to hear back from them anymore. So, um, but the more we can be a clanging gong, the better, that they know that we're here. Uh, we did get to eat with both Representative Wesco from Elkhart, because this is, that's the area that we're in, and Representative Bauer from South Bend. Representative Wesco is Republican, Representative Bauer is a Democrat. They, they were very engaging. They get along very well with each other, and that was a very helpful time. So next year, if you get the opportunity to go, I know it's, you know, in the middle of the week, it's, it is a great experience. And then I just. And then I just wanted to be on the record, too, I had the opportunity to serve with Stacy, and I thought it was so fitting that we had a JAG approval tonight, because without Stacy and Lucas, we wouldn't have the JAG program, and that has impacted many, many students, and obviously, she, through her passion and advocacy, impacted many in the community, but she was a wonderful board member, a great friend, and I missed her when she was not on the board anymore, but thankful that she could still pour into the middle school. And I will reiterate what Katie said, several of her close friends that don't live in the area said, this is special, what you all have here, and they were amazed at the support that our administration gave to be able to have the funeral and the visitation there, and especially with Cassie and her care for Lucas and stuff.
Absolutely.
Well, Miss Stacy?
One more thing for the good of the group. Scott would like us all to stay for some professional, very moment of professional fulfillment for the board, just board members. Now you guys.
Although, super quick, before you guys head out, how did all of our fun weather stuff go today? All thumbs up? That's great. I know it can be stressful, it doesn't happen often, we have to actually worry about that so much as just drills, so.
It's not in smell, it was.
Eight hundred and thirty minutes with eighth graders through seniors.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm glad that went over well, and hopefully, we don't have to worry with Mother Nature being what she is right now. We don't have to worry about that too much more, but that's good to hear.
There was a tornado warning one time when I, when I was at Akron, and it happened over lunch, so they evacuated the cafeteria to a part of the building that I had never seen before. It was down, down under, way down under, and probably, maybe, maybe five feet tall. And we were safe there, but geez, anyway. Yes.
Real quick, I want to thank Sheriff Heishman, because we now have Skeeter and Officer Mitch Scott. I don't want that to get lost in the community support we get. I meant to say that when I had my list, and I must have looked right over it, but having two of those guys now is awesome. Like, the other day, Mitch was off in Culver with Lori, tracking down some kids, and we were able to still get some business done with Skeeter, so that's huge for us as a corporation.
And we want to push to keep that.
Yep, we need to keep that.
I know Travis is a big proponent of it, so I really appreciate that.
You can't be taking them both. You got it right here or something. You got it. That was a, that's a differentiation of a, of a, not, not.
I totally agree.
No, I know we are. No, I, I get, I get it, though, because I was in elementary for twenty-four, twenty-three of my twenty-four years, and let me tell you, it's all about the high school. Are there any objections to adjourned this meeting?
No.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time tonight.